Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the May 27th, 2020 Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting, virtually, to order. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Flags are behind me. Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the Republic.
One nation.
A moment of silence. Thank you. Normally, at this time, we have flag presentations for our military. Obviously, it's not quite possible under these circumstances, but I would like to recognize two servicemen this evening. First, we'd like to welcome home Army Major John Pavlovak has safely returned home from his deployment in Guantanamo Bay. So we're happy to have him home back in town, and so welcome back, Major. And second, Army Specialist Evan Exton has deployed to Iraq on May 21st. Specialist Exton is expected to serve a nine-month deployment. We wish him a safe and speedy return, and we certainly thank him for his service as well. We wanted to make sure, the board wanted to make sure these men were acknowledged for their service. We will attempt to hold a full ceremony sometime in the future, following our normal protocol, when we're able to do that. So, thank you both. Before we go any further, I just want to just make a couple of quick comments about the agenda first. I'd like to just announce that we're going to add letter L, and that will be an agenda item for the Council Rock School District Star Sloan School. We're going to consider a resolution to approve submission of a 537 planning module. That was a late addition, and we'll do that later in the agenda. And also, just remind everybody for public comment, there'll be two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity will be for agenda items only, and if you'd like to comment on an agenda item, please send an email to publiccomment@nhtwp.org. In the subject, put the agenda item you wish to comment on, and in the body of your email, please put your name and address for the record. When the time comes for public comment, we will recognize you and will open up your microphone. We will not see your video, but we will hear you. Just please be patient, as it takes a couple of keystrokes and mouse clicks to get you live, and then when we're done, we'll turn your microphone back off. All the standard rules apply. Three minutes, please. The same rule will apply for public comment at the end. However, you don't have to specifically put your agenda item in the subject, just please put that you'd like to comment during public comment in the end, but we do need your name and address for the record in the body as well. We'll recognize you then, and turn your microphone on. We have two special presentations tonight. It's my honor to recognize State Representative Wendy Thomas, who agreed to be here today. She's got a few very timely items to speak with us about. She is in Harrisburg and jumped off the floor of the House to come be with us, so we'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, and thank you for having me today. It's a great opportunity to come to you. I am in Harrisburg. We are working on the budget, but hot off the press, in case you haven't seen it, the governor did announce some clarification of things that could happen in yellow, and Bucks County is slated to move to yellow on June 5th, we hope, but the numbers have been very good. I definitely think we're headed that way. All indications are we'll move to yellow, and one of the key things I think the township might be interested in is anyone who can do outdoor seating will be able to have some outdoor seating and restaurants in the yellow phase. Our restaurants have really suffered during this time, but they've stuck with us, and so it'll be a nice way for them to get some additional revenue, and that'll be some more information. The governor also clarified what will happen when we move to green, and that full explanation is on the governor's website, at the governor's website or on my Facebook page, either place, if anyone wants to see those details. So what I've been doing in Harrisburg this week is really working on the budget. The budget comes in many different bills and a lot of details, but yesterday, we were able to pass out of the House the core numbers of the budget. The issue this state of Pennsylvania has right now is we are currently about $2 billion short, and we don't know the revenues that will be coming in, because we've extended the tax deadline. But the good news is, we did a short-term budget, so we'll be able to get those projections and look at those numbers. So basically, we did a budget for five months. We flat-funded things for five months' worth at what they were at this year. Couple good exceptions, though. We fully funded for an entire year education. We know that the schools need that money upfront. They've got a plan for a whole year. We, you know, we all hope they're going to be able to come back, but either way, they need that money for planning purposes, and so we, as a House, united behind fully funding schools, and that is K-12 education, and it's also secondary education, all funded at flat from this year to next year. So that's over in the Senate, hopefully get there, and then to the governor for signature. The only other update I had was many people in our community participated in a donation drive we did for long-term care for our long-term care facilities in Northampton Township, Twining and Richborough Rehab, and, oh, in Brookdale. And we got such amazing response from the community. I want to thank everyone. We took activity books and homemade cards, and also sanitizer and the shields that they can wear that the high school made. We got some gloves, some masks, and we were able to give some to each facility. They were, they had us in tears as we delivered them. They were so happy. So if any residents are out there and looking for something to do while they're still under stay-at-home, and they want to make a card for a healthcare worker or for a long-term care resident, it really brings joy to their day. So that was a huge exception, and that was specifically in Northampton Township. So thank you to everyone.
Standing. Thanks. Anything else?
No. Anybody have any questions for me? I'm happy to answer any.
Anybody from the board? I'm just really glad to hear that the donation drive went so well. Northampton Township always comes through. Yeah, that's fantastic.
Yes, they came and shared some stories about some of their residents and some of the stuff with the activity books and things. It's just been hard, because obviously, they've been shut in, and they haven't had visitors, and they were so grateful for all the things that we did. So it was a great job by Northampton.
Yeah. On behalf of all them, thank you for doing that. That's great. It's great stuff. Yeah. All right, well, we'll let you get back to your important work. Let you run.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next on the agenda, if I can get back to it, is some other special presentations. It's my honor tonight that we're going to honor two of our emergency service organizations. First, for those that you did not know, Police Week was May 10th through May 16th, and I'm not going to read the proclamation word for word, but I would like to kind of just give a bit of a summary. Whereas the Congress and the Presidency of the United States designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and the members of Northampton Township Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Northampton Township. And just paraphrasing some, "The members of our police department recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence. Our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency with which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Adam Selisker, Township Supervisor and 2020 Board Chairman, call upon the citizens of Northampton Township and all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10th through May 16th, 2020, as Police Week commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities." So thank you for that. This proclamation, I'm sure, will hang in the police department, and if and when things open back up to the public, you'll be able to stop by and see that. Second, I'd like to recognize Emergency Medical Services, or EMS Week, which was May 17th through 23rd. And whereas, the emergency medical service is a vital public service, providing lifesaving care 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. Whereas, the emergency medical service consists of first responders, EMTs, paramedics, medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, nurses, physicians, and many other trained members. Now therefore, I, Adam Selisker, Township Supervisor and 2020 Board Chairman, call upon the citizens of Northampton Township, all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations, to observe the week of, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. I can't think of two finer agencies. I have the privilege of working with them every day, and if you don't think that they shined, boy, in the last 12 weeks, they really shined. They have been presented with an really untested amount of responsibility in this COVID-19 situation, and they have shined all around. I can attest to that firsthand. So to all our police officers and emergency medical providers, a big thank you from all the citizens of Northampton Township, the Board of Supervisors, the staff. We're really proud to work with you. So thank you very much. And we do have one more proclamation, and I'll turn that over to Eileen.
Last week, excuse me, last week was designated as National Public Works Week, and those of us in Northampton Township know that we have the best men and women working in our Public Works Division. We have declared through a proclamation that May 17th to the 23rd, 2020, to be Northampton Township Public Works Week, to pay tribute to our employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. The national theme this year is the rhythm of public works. Our public works keeps our community's rhythm moving by providing an orchestra of services and provides the harmony needed for collaboration with our other stakeholders in the township. Again, we want to thank all of our public work employees throughout the year and to thank them very much for the work that they have been doing through this immediate crisis. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Eileen. Next, we have public comment, and I'm just checking to see if we, on the agenda items only, and I do not see anybody signed up for public comment on the agenda items, so we'll move on. First is approval of the minutes. Frank?
If no one has any objections, I request the minutes be approved by unanimous consent.
Objection here. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. And counts payable for May 13th and May 27th. Kim?
Yes. The bill's list for May 13th, 2020, total all funds, $1,479,292.70. And the bill's list for May 27th, 2020, total all funds, $599,862.69.
Any objections? Okay, very good. Thank you. We're going to move on. No public hearings tonight, no unfinished business. We're going to move on to new business. First is consider preliminary final plan, land development for 100 Steam Whistle Drive. Barry?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. Is Larry Byrne and David Schenck on?
Yes.
Okay, good. So is that both people, or?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good. So we have, for land development tonight, we have a property on 100 Steam Whistle Drive in our Business and Technology Center. The applicant is proposing to construct an accessory storage garage consisting of 4,940 square feet. The site also contains a separate 10,022-square-foot warehouse building, public water and sewer service site. The project is located in the industrial, one planned industrial office district, which permits a variety of industrial manufacturing office uses on a minimum size of two acres, minimum width of 200 feet. Maybe Larry and Dave, you could please introduce yourself, and maybe any opening comments you have, or?
Sure. Well, my name is, I'm Larry Byrne. I'm the engineer. I prepared the plan for David Schenck. David Schenck is the owner of the property. We originally submitted the plans to the township in November of 2019 and received some review comments from township engineer and staff. The Gilmore Letter was dated December 20th, 2019. We had then revised the plan to address those comments in the township engineer's letter and resubmitted the plan back to the township. It was subsequently re-reviewed. Additional comment letter was issued by Gilmore Associates, and we proceeded to the Township, Northampton Township Planning Commission meeting on February 26th, where the plan was recommended for approval. Being that, you know, because of this COVID issue, we've been delayed a couple months, but we're here this evening just to have the Board of Supervisors approve the preliminary final plan, so Mr. Schenck could build his garage. I could get into a little more detail on the plan if you want, or?
That's good, Larry. And then is David Schenck also having any comments, or?
No, I think that the plan pretty much speaks for itself. It's a garage that we're going to utilize for our own purposes. It's not for rental or for sale or anything. It's something that we're going to use to store our own heavy equipment in. We have the need now to feel that we need to get some stuff inside that we normally would not have done, so this building is just essentially a garage.
Okay. Well, I'd like to, just for the board's benefit, we've had some discussion on this. There's really just two items of note that we'd like to talk a little bit more about tonight. The first item is that, given that the proposed garage is an accessory structure to the principal use, the Planning Commission recommended be no additional parking required. However, we would like to have the applicant place a note on the plan that if the garage is leased to a separate entity, that at that point in time, additional parking would be provided based on the use of that space. I understand that was something that was agreeable to the applicant, or?
Yes, it was agreeable.
Okay. Then the second thing, we've had a little bit of discussion on the, you know, concept of sidewalks on the site. That particular site in our Business and Technology Center, I think most people generally agree that it would not necessarily be needed to have sidewalks there, because most of the properties do not have sidewalks. I think probably the thought process was that typically, when a sidewalk is not required, that fee in lieu of is paid to the township, but I think it was brought to our attention by the applicant that the, this fee was paid when the property was originally developed in the 1970s. And at this point in time, the township did do some preliminary checking of its records, but couldn't find, you know, evidence of any type of payment either way. So I think part of the thought process we had was that we would give it maybe a two-week time period until June 10th, to see if we could find out whether the fee was paid or not. If we can't verify either way, then we would, you know, just waive the fee, so, and not, you know, have a fee in lieu of sidewalks.
Well, actually, just intervene for a second. As you may or may not know, we are also the original developer of the whole industrial park.
Yes.
For the lots, and we are also the builder and developer of the building, the main building on this site. So this site has actually been through the development process twice, so to speak, and it was just my idea of asking for this, because when we built, when Huntington Valley Enterprises built this, the building, the 10,000-foot building that's on the site already, we dealt with all those questions again, as far as the sidewalk issue, and it was the township's feeling at that time, that they didn't even want sidewalks, because they wanted to keep a more country atmosphere rather than a city atmosphere that the sidewalks tend to bring. So that was the reason why I asked you if you could.
Yeah, so I guess initially, there was a little misunderstanding, then. We originally thought, David, that the fee was paid back when the property was originally developed in 1970s, but you're saying that when the property was developed, as part of this grand scheme of all the properties back there, that it was deemed not to have sidewalks required as part of the plan development?
Yes, it was, because there's only, out of all the buildings in the entire industrial park, 100 and some acres, there's only one building that has sidewalks, and that was because of this same type of an issue a couple years ago. The rest of the park, there's no sidewalks, the entire industrial park.
Yes, and I guess, just thinking out loud here, typically, what we do do, though, is that, and there's other land development throughout the township, that if it's deemed not wise or advisable to put a sidewalk in, that the applicant would still pay a fee as part of that process. So I guess maybe, I don't know, other board members have comments on that, whether, originally, my understanding was that the fee was paid previously, but you're thinking?
I'm like you. We checked back in our records, and we don't have the records going back into the 70s for the original development. That was Traymore Associates did that originally. They were the developers of that third section of the industrial park, and I can't remember if we paid in lieu of sidewalks then, or if we did it when we did the building, probably in the early, middle 80s either. So we don't have, we don't have records going back that stipulate that either way, but we went through the development process, and we did everything the township wanted back then, and so we just thought that this particular building is an accessory building. It's not going to be rented. It's not going to be sold. There's no way for us to recoup any of the money that is paid out for these fees. The two fees that the township has asked for, the sidewalks and the park and recreation fee, add up to just short of $19,000, which represents almost 20% of the cost of putting up the structure. So it's a substantial amount of money that's being asked for, and so we're just asking the township if they could grant us some concession with these fees, because they are fairly substantial for a building project of this size.
Sure.
May I say something?
Sure. The only thing I was going to add to that, and I just put out to the board members, and maybe one proposal we could discuss is perhaps coming on the compromise of the fee in lieu of, and maybe, you know, to add a fee, I'm proposing perhaps $5,000 as the fee in lieu of. I just want to make sure we're consistent with other developers that come before this board, that we do charge a fee, and I do understand the property was developed before, but, you know, maybe there's, I'd like to hear feedback from other board members, but maybe the original fee was calculated to be 10,445, but maybe there'd be a compromise of a $5,000 fee. The other thing I'll mention to you, David and Larry, is this property will likely be subject to LERTA, which is a tax abatement, if it's approved in June by this board or by the school board, so that would be additional tax savings you would have through the LERTA program, which would save about 10% of your cost of construction through property taxes. But, you know, any other board members comment on some type of proposed change to that fee? Eileen?
Yeah. I just, you're not asking for a waiver of the park and rec?
No. No, just saying the?
No, I'm asking David Schenck.
Oh.
Well, we're just asking so that you realize that the township is asking almost $19,000 from us in fees to put up a building that is going to cost approximately 102,000. So normally, if we were putting up a 10,000 or 20,000-foot building, this would represent a much smaller percentage of the building, but for a 5,000-foot building, it's quite a bit for something that's not going to be leased out and not going to be sold. There's no way for us to recoup any of these costs. This is just.
But in your waivers of different things, you didn't ask for a waiver from Park and Rec. You just asked for a waiver from?
We think if we get the waiver from the sidewalks, that it would give us enough relief that, you know, I guess we would be okay with it. Yes. We didn't, we didn't even know there was a Parks and Rec fee until we got it listed, so we weren't even aware of that, because we've.
Kim, did you have some? Kim, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
No, I just, when we went into this, I thought our problem was that we didn't want to charge him twice.
Right. Yeah.
Well, we don't know, because we, our records don't go back that far.
Frank, did you have any comment? I'm sorry.
I think Barry's proposal was reasonable, but I think that, you know, if we go ahead and we find that there has been, that the fees already been paid, then obviously, we would not ask it to be paid a second time, but if it hasn't been paid, then I think, you know, when you start looking at this, you don't expect the fees to equal 20% of the cost of the building. I agree, that's a bit high. So what Barry has just suggested is reasonable, in my view.
I just have one question. Dave, do you think there's a decent chance you did pay that fee back then? I mean, I know there's no record, but if you feel that you did pay, you know, our proposal was to go look and see if we could find it, and if we couldn't, then we were going to.
I think there was a fee paid when we developed the primary building on this lot back in the early, mid 80s. It was probably not that amount, because construction costs in the last 30 years have risen, so I'm sure it's not that, but I believe that we did pay a fee, but I looked through our records, and we actually, we don't really go back anywhere near there at this point, so I can't tell you that. I did look.
Yeah, I respect that. I don't think that we're looking to make sure that the amounts in any way would match, but I do think if you think you paid back then, you shouldn't have to double pay. That's my position. I would be worried.
Well, I think we paid, but the building upside down.
And I think Barry's original proposal was, did my screen, did I freeze up? I don't know if I froze up.
No, Dave did.
No, you could have.
Are you guys still here?
Oh, I did.
Okay. I think Barry's proposal was to allow the township, allow the township a couple weeks to see if they could find any records either way, and if we couldn't, I think we would just call it neutral, especially if you think you paid. I mean, it's unfortunate that there's poor records on both sides, I guess, but I don't, my position is I wouldn't want you to double pay.
But this is only for sidewalks in lieu of?
Only for the sidewalk issue.
Only for sidewalks, yeah.
I'm only talking about the sidewalk issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd be personally fine with that, too, so maybe we had talked, perhaps giving a date of the township by June 10th, would see if they got receipt payment. If by that date, we couldn't determine where we received it, either way, we would charge no fee for the sidewalks, presuming that it was paid at some point in time during developing this project.
Okay, will we be amenable to that if you agree to that? We would agree to that.
Sure. Okay. Was that, maybe, Adam, if I could read the motion, and then we could comment on that?
Sure.
And I should ask the applicant, is there any other comments you'd like to make, or?
Uh, no.
Sorry, any other comment there?
No, I just respectfully request the approval, final plan approval, conditioned on the list of waivers letter, and we'll comply with all the items in the Gilmore Letter.
So if I could, maybe you read the motion, or?
Please do.
I move to, I move for approval of the Schenck Land Development, SLD 19-9, subject to compliance with the Township Engineer's Review Letter dated February 26, 2020, the Township Planner Review Letter dated February 24, 2020, and a Township Traffic Engineer Review Letter dated February 25, 2020. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted, subject to the satisfaction of the Township Engineer. Approval is also be in accordance with the following. First item, the applicant shall enter into a land development and escrow agreement in a form acceptable to the Township Solicitor and Engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. Second item, the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including, but not limited to, DEP, PENDOT, and the municipal authority. Third item, a note shall be placed on the plan that the garage is accessory to the principal use and may not be leased out separately. The fourth item would be that a fee, and Joe, you may have to help me with this, but a fee in lieu of sidewalks is required in the amount of 10,445 as calculated by the Township Engineer, but subject to verification of the fee being paid but, um, not being paid. And the township would have until June 10th, 2020 to verify whether it was paid or not. So if it was, uh, if township cannot identify where the fee was not paid, then there'd be no fee required.
Barry, one question.
Sure.
One question on that. Uh, if it, uh, if we, if we cannot make that determination, obviously there is no fee. If, if you make a determination that in fact the fee was not paid, are you still suggesting that the fee in lieu of sidewalks, given the percentage of costs, given the percentage of the fee cost of almost 20%, would be reduced to $5,000?
Yes, that's a good point, Frank. So I would propose that. So if we can prove that no fee was paid for sidewalks, um, that the, by June 10th, that the fee would be reduced to $5,000. And the last point is that the park and recreation impact fee in the amount of $8,282.30 is required.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Make sure your microphones are off or turned on.
Second.
Are you making a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, is there any, uh, discussion? Anything else, Barry?
Okay. If I, if I can just
No, I would ask, is that acceptable to those conditions?
Wait, I'm not the oldest, I'm not the oldest on the board, but I've been around the longest. Um, and in 1970s, like I said earlier, there were no such thing as Lewin sidewalk. Um, but if you're saying, Mr. Shank, that in the 1980s, when you put up the main building, that there were probably, um, there were probably fees at that time, then I think we will be able to find something at the Recorder of Deeds, um, in order to one way or the other. And also please look into our LERTA program. Um, you know, we're going to hopefully pass it by June and then after you're, you go for your permits, there's a lot of different things that you have to abide by. So please look into that and you can save yourself some taxes for five years.
Okay, thank you.
Joey, I was gonna, Adam, I was just gonna check with the applicant, make sure that
Thank you.
the motion is read, would be acceptable if it was approved by this board.
It is acceptable, yes.
Okay, thanks. Is there any other, any other board discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. The call vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Just want to say, Larry, David, we certainly appreciate your, uh, you member of the business community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I am having a little bit of connection problem. Can you guys still hear me? Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I think we all are.
Yeah, we all are. We're all having a bandwidth issue.
Yeah, there seems to be some, um, connection issues. Okay, we're gonna continue. We're gonna plow through, uh, next on the agenda is consider resolution designating areas eligible for participation in the LERTA program. Eileen?
Okay, um, if all of a sudden you can't hear me, please like wave at me or something. Um, okay, our board had, has planned numerous initiatives to help facilitate development and encourage economic development and revitalization within the township. In August of 2014, we passed an ordinance to implement the LERTA program, which permits the township to exempt improvements to commercial, industrial, and other business properties from increased real estate taxes for a five-year period. We initially approved the LERTA program because we believed this program would be instrumental in revitalizing its business tax base in Richborough, Holland, and the Business Park. In order to continue the program, we must pass a new resolution and ordinance to extend it. We must first pass a resolution to establish the boundaries of the LERTA districts. The areas we are including in the resolution are the I-1 zoning district known as the Northampton Township Business and Technology Center, the Spring Mill Manor property on the west side of Jacksonville Road, and the Village Overlay District in Richborough and Holland. May I read the motion, sir?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R-20-13, Designing the Borders for LERTA Zone Areas Eligible for Real Estate Tax Exemption on New Construction and Approvements in accordance with a LERTA Program for Northampton Township and the Economic Redevelopment Tax Assistance Act. Excuse me, Joe, do you think I need to put the boundaries in this, um, motion?
No, Eileen, um, in this case, since, since we are, uh, the official action of the supervisors will be to adopt an ordinance, which has been already advertised and has all of the boundaries set forth in the ordinance. I don't think it's necessary for you to spell it out in the motion, just to represent that it's all spelled out in the ordinance.
Okay, then I'm done, sir.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? You can raise your hand if it's easier. Okay, thank you. Kim, we have a motion in a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Eileen, anything further?
No, it's, uh, the only thing different from last time is we do not have the east side of Jacksonville Road, which was the Spring Mill Country Club, uh, and we did not include that because we have a conservation easement on it now. So there was no need to, um, and we're hoping last time, uh, we had, I think, Bob, if I'm correct, about five or six, uh, projects for our LERTA, LERTA throughout the five years. Seven altogether, and, um, it worked out very well. So I think the boundaries are good and my next resolution and ordinance will explain even more about the program.
Okay.
Um, Adam, before you call the vote, um, the ordinance does seem to include the Spring Mill Country Club property.
No, it doesn't.
Perhaps I'm looking at an older version then, because the version I'm looking at in Section 402A does also include Spring Mill Country Club property.
Oh, you're right.
Should we actually delete the Spring Mill Country Club property completely?
Yeah.
And just focus on the Business Technology Center column and
This may have been an inadvertence, but I, I wasn't, I, I wasn't sure if it was the intent or not, but having just Eileen say it wasn't intended, it is included in the ordinance right now. So you can remove it without
Yes, but the manor isn't, I think that's more of a typographical error.
Yeah, the ma, it should say Spring Mill Manor property.
Right, I think Country Club is a typo error because there is nowhere in the ordinance that says about the manor and last time it was both. So I think when one was deleted, the wrong one was deleted.
Well, just remember, we're, we're attaching a map as an exhibit to these documents, which clearly delineates the boundaries of the zones. So
And that's in the right one.
If you want, in both documents, so if you wanted to include the Spring Mill Manor property, Joe is correct. The ordinance should read Spring Mill Manor Property, not Spring Mill Country Club. But you don't have to, the other, uh, the resolution was fine.
I think we should be clear.
Or you can delete them all.
Let's just make sure.
Well, here's a thought. I mean, how about if we deleted Spring Mill completely? Because I, I really don't think it's necessary, especially since, you know, 80% of the property has already been developed and on the conservation easement. One thought that we missed last time was the, um, the, you know, Village in Holland, you know, the, I forget what that's called, the, the little township area in Holland, you know, the community center, the commercial zone in, in Holland, right off of Buck Road. I mean, should we try to include that to try to spur some economic?
Where is that? I thought, is that's not part of the Village Overlay?
No.
Where is that? Where are we talking about, guys? Talk about where it is.
All right, so hey, just, uh, just as, only, if only one person can talk at once and it just cuts everybody out if too many people talk. So sorry about that, but, uh, I didn't hear what you said, Bob.
It does not include any of that property. Um, it does include Pheasant Run, if that's the one you're thinking of, Barry.
Well, I was thinking of the Village Shires, um,
Village Shires, because, right, that's not included.
I was thinking maybe including that, that site because that may be a nice site to get developed.
All right.
So I would delete Spring Mill and Bill, I would delete Spring Mill completely and add the Village Shires, uh, you know, whatever zone adds, like, you know, C1 zone or something.
Yes. It's, um,
I'm sorry, if we're doing that, that part of, um, Village Shires, I guess I'm gonna recuse myself since I practice in one of the offices there. Good night. In Village Shires.
You don't own, you don't own the property.
No, no.
Yeah.
An independent contractor there.
Well, I should disclose, I do buy coffee at Dunkin' Donuts there, so, full disclosure.
Okay.
So just as a, just as a point of order, Kim, are you recusing yourself?
Oh, well, Kim, Kim, Kim
What?
I'm sorry?
Kim may not need to in that if you are going to delete items from the ordinance that's been advertised, I believe you can do that this evening. If you intend to expand the LERTA to include areas that weren't part of an advertised ordinance, I think that may be problematic.
Joe, we haven't advertised the ordinance yet.
Oh, so this is, this is, the, we're, we're authorizing the ordinance for advertisement?
That's gonna be the next, that's the next point of business.
That's the next item. Right, right now we are
We're designating, we're designating the areas right now.
Correct.
That's fine.
You need to, you need to adopt a resolution first to designate the areas, then adopt an ordinance which spells out the program criteria.
Correct, I'm a step ahead.
Authorization to advertise.
Okay, so I'm sorry, just I need to get this point of order clear. So, Kim, are you recusing yourself because you practice there?
No, I'm not because I don't have my
Okay. Perfect, that's fine, because you did, you made the second, you made the second, so I just wanted to make it clear you're, you're still in, that's fine. So we have a motion in a second.
Okay, but the motion will change that we are removing Spring Mill Manor and from the mo, from the original resolution, and we are adding the Village Shires Shopping Center area.
Yes, it's C2 commercial there. We can add that, that small zone.
So it's, it's the C2 commercial area at, um, West Village Road.
Village Shires.
At Buck Road Village Shires.
Now, you, you don't need to, you don't need to amend the red, the, uh, motion because the motion, um, the motion refers to the resolution and a map. So I will, with, with this discussion, I will, uh, change the map to include that area and delete Spring Mill.
Okay.
Okay, just, just for, just for clarity, just for clarity's sake, Kim, you made the second, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Eileen, did you have something else to add? I'm sorry.
No, I, I just, you know, that's, that is part of it and when I read the, um, resolu, when I read the motion for the ordinance, it does not say anything about the boundaries, so therefore Bob will have to change the actual ordinance before it is put in the newspaper.
Yes, I will change that 402, um, 402, yeah, Section 402A.
Bob, discussion?
Sure, Barry.
Yeah, it does a right property, is that included in the Village Overlay District for Holland?
It, it is.
Okay.
Um, Barry, did you have any other comments?
Yeah.
Frank, any comments? Okay, none from me either. The only thing I said was I apologized to everybody that's watching. Apparently we are all having connectivity issues. The Zoom is a little slow and choppy, so sorry about that. Uh, we're doing the best we can to get through it. So we have a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries by zero. Next on the agenda is a consider authorization to advertise an ordinance establishing a LERTA program. Eileen again.
Okay, since the resolution to determine the boundaries have passed, we must now adopt an ordinance outlining the criteria for the program. The ordinance will officially designate the areas eligible and explain the criteria, which would exempt 100% of an increase in real estate taxes attributable to new construction and/or improvements to the business properties for a five-year period. The ordinance expires on the fifth anniversary of enactment and we would like to extend the program. The school district and the county must also adopt ordinances to participate in granting the tax exemptions. At the present time, the school district and the county have agreed and have indicated support. We need to pass a motion to authorize the administration to advertise the proposed ordinance establishing the LERTA program for a public hearing. May I read the motion, sir?
Please.
I'm reading the motion. Can you? I move to authorize the Township Administration to advertise a proposed ordinance establishing the criteria for implementing a LERTA program in accordance with the local Economic Redevelopment Tax Assistance Act and to schedule a public hearing to consider adoption of the ordinance on June 24th, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Kim, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Eileen, anything further?
I think we talked about it prior, so this is just to advertise.
Kim?
How do you advertise, Bob, during the COVID?
Um, I just wanna say that I think LERTA program, but, okay. Um, this is a wonderful program that helps develop businesses in our community, which helps us all. Um, and, uh, we've had like seven properties from, um, Holland, New Richborough, I believe, and that have used the LERTA program and helped to develop their businesses. And, um, I, I think that we have to do what we can to help small businesses, what we can. So I think this is a great thing. That's it.
Can't hear you, Adam. You're muted.
Barry or Frank, sorry?
Now, now, now we got you.
I couldn't hear you, Adam.
I couldn't hear you before.
Yeah, uh, I, I keep getting a, uh, internet connection is unstable message. I don't know if it's my computer. Anyway, Barry or Frank, any comments?
No.
No.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we Next, we have a, uh, consider resolution authorizing the filling of an application for redevelopment assistance capital program. That will be Kim.
This resolution is, um, is authorizing our township manager or other appropriate officials to submit a combined application and business plan to obtain the second redevelopment assistance capital program grant through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget in the amount of one million dollars. This is in addition to the first RACP grant the township was awarded in two thousand and eighteen for one million dollars. The total grant amount is two million dollars. Um, a requirement of the grant program is to have a resolution from the municipal governing body authorizing submission of the combined application and business plan and designating the township manager to execute the application and other documents related to any grant award. And with that, can I make a motion? I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty dash fourteen authorizing the Township Administration to submit an, uh, RACP combined application and business plan to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of the Budget as required to obtain a grant in the amount of two, two million dollars to fund the police headquarters project.
Hank, do you have a motion? Is there a second? I think Barry said second. He's on mute, but.
I said second, yep, second.
Thanks. Uh, okay, motion, a second. Any discussion? Kim, anything else? Barry?
Nope, all good.
Eileen? Nope, Frank?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Your hand? Opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Kim, you're up next for the next, uh, consider resolution authorizing grant matching funds commitment.
Okay, this next one states that Northampton Township has authorized, committed, and utilized interim funds supplied by the two thousand and eighteen bond issuance in the amount of two million dollars and permanent funding from a two thousand and eighteen bond issuance in the amount of three million, three thousand seventy-two dollars. Uh, three, three million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and a two thousand and fifteen bond issuance in the amount of one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Basically, what this is saying is that we're, we're saying that this was a matching fund and that we matched it. Oh, can I make a resolution? Can you move this? I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty dash fifteen stating that Northampton Township Board of Supervisors has obtained the required matching and interim funds for the police headquarters project and has authorized, committed, and utilized the funds in accordance with the standards in the application to the Pennsylvania Governor's Office of the Budget's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program to obtain a grant in the amount of two million dollars to fund the police headquarters project.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Anyone? Hearing not all?
Station.
Hearing not all, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so order. We are experiencing some tough technical difficulty here. Um, we'll try to keep plowing through it. Um, and then, uh, if we can't, we may have to just join some of these together. Uh, Frank? Uh, consider resolution appointing the township manager a designated agent?
Okay, the township has currently spent approximately fifty thousand dollars in COVID-nineteen-related costs. Includes one disinfectant machine and some IT equipment and PPE and disinfectant products. This, the resolution is part of an application submission process and must be approved prior to the filing for reimbursement of eligible costs. The admini, administration has recommended that the board adopt this resolution. I'd like to make the resolution. Can you hear me?
Please. Yes.
Hello? Okay. I move to adopt resolution R twenty dash sixteen authorizing the township manager to execute agreements with the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for federal disaster relief related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Here we have a motion, is there a second? Kim, thank you. Eileen, thank you both. Any comment? Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Risk, raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Frank. Uh, next, um, uh, resolution authorizing the township manager to execute a traffic signal permit plan. Eileen?
As a part of the land development approval for the construction of the new Star School on the Rich Borough Middle School campus, the Council Rock School District will be installing a traffic signal at the intersection of Upper Holland Road and Township Road as required by the land development plan approved on December the eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen. This traffic signal will be constructed in accordance with township specifications for two traffic signals, including pedestrian signals, emergency preemption, a battery backup system, and decorative crosswalk, crosswalks following Village Overlay District Design Guidelines. In order to obtain a permit for a new traffic signal, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation requires a resolution, and we must designate an individual to execute PennDOT's Application for Traffic Signal Approval Form. We will submit it to the department for review and approval. May I read the resolution? Thank you. I move to adopt resolution R twenty seventeen to authorize the township manager to execute and file PennDOT Form TE dash one sixty Application for a Traffic Signal Approval with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Township Road and Upper Holland Road.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in, in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Uh, next on the list is, uh, consider uh, authorizing execution of an election of reimbursement form with the PA Department of Labor. Frank?
Excuse me. Earlier this year, the administration determined that it would be more cost-effective to process payroll for all seasonal and non-regular part-time employees through ADP, an automatic data processing company specializing in payroll services. This required the township to obtain a second employer identification number for the payment of all withholding amounts from the payroll of employees processed through the ADP program or system. As part of the setup process, the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry requires the local governing body to approve and authorize the execution of an election of reimbursement option form for employment compensation benefits paid by the Commonwealth on behalf of the township. The township is currently a reimbursable employer for unemployment compensation benefits, uh, payments for its employees. That means that the Commonwealth pays any benefits due on the, on the behalf of the township, and the township reimburses the Commonwealth for those payments. Approval of this election option would, it would continue to practice for all season, non-regular, and part-time employees under the new employee identification number. Like, do you make the motion?
Please.
Hello? Okay. I move to authorize the township manager to execute PA Department of Labor and Industry Form UC one six nine two electing a reimbursement option for payment of unemployment compensation benefits for all seasonal and non-regular part-time employees if and when such payments are due in accordance with applicable law.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, Council Rock School District, Star Sloan School Resolution. Eileen?
Okay, we discussed that, and we know that Council Rock is building a new Star School on the grounds next to the Rich Borough Middle School. In order for their, um, their land development to go through, we must pass a resolution that will be submitted to DEP. The sewage facility planning module is required to be submitted to DEP, and we must pass the resolution to adopt the plan revision and submit it to DEP for this land development. May I read the? Thank you. I move to approve DEP resolution R twenty dash one A for plan revision for new land development to be approved for the Council Rock School District Star Sloan School.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
The only, the only thing that I want to say is not the Star Sloan School, it's the Star Schools. Their star means achieve, Sloan, and all of them. So it's not Star is one, Star is one and Sloan is another. It's Sloan and Achieve, and they put them all together and made a, a name of Star, so you may want to change. Because it's not Star Sloan.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, again, sorry about the connection. For those that are trying to watch or listen, it's a little bit, uh, difficult tonight, but we'll continue on. Uh, we have liaison reports. Uh, first up is, uh, Dr. Rose.
Okay, first, our senior center. The senior center staff continues their initiative to reach out to all members of the center. They're calling and checking to assure the members' safety and assist them with any information they may need regarding available resources. Over the past month, um, the center's existing book club went virtual and continues to thrive. Due to its popularity, a second virtual book club for seniors was started in conjunction with the library. The coloring club is meeting virtually every Wednesday at one PM. The Robson instructor has been offering her class on Zoom and has three different classes of hers that can be viewed virtually as well. The center's Godly reported getting off to a great start, too. Our seniors are definitely staying busy. If you're a senior or know of a senior who needs assistance, please call, contact the center at two one five, three five seven, eight one nine nine. Please leave a message and your call will be returned. The staff at the center looks forward to seeing their members and friends as soon as it is possible. Please continue to stay safe. Parks and Rec. Parks and Recreation continues to keep the community active and engaged during this difficult time with virtual programs found in the Virtual Recreation Center and at the Northampton Municipal Park. Day is Bike Month and is cur, and currently there is a bike scavenger hunt. The challenge is to find certain areas in the municipal park. When you find each spot, take a photo with your buddy at each of the six locations and submit them to Parks and Rec for a chance to be randomly selected to win a twenty-five-dollar wallet gift card. Instructions, instructions are posted online. I'd like to announce a list of upcoming in-the-park activities that will be scheduled in the weeks to come. A Chalk the Walk Day, a Pet Parade, and Who Does It Game of Clue. Details will be posted on the Parks Trails prior to the event and will be on the Park and Rec web, Park and Rec website. Um, we are also hosting an interactive superheroes party in early June. Captain America and Wonder Woman will meet you on a Zoom call and offer an interactive superhero kit for you to join them. There will be storage time craft and art lessons, superhero training, and more. You will also be eligible to take the oath to become a superhero. You won't want to miss out. Registration will be announced soon on the website. Registration will be limited, so you need to check the website daily. The fourth in a series of Friday night family trivia on Parks and Rec's Facebook Live is scheduled for July fifth. So far, we have had great fun with Lego, Disney, and board games and toys. I'm anxious to see what's planned for next Friday. June is a month of celebrations, and we want to celebrate our two thousand and twenty graduates with a photo frame. All are invited to take a photo of your favorite graduate, whether kindergarten, high school, college, or graduate school in the park's beautiful location as a backdrop. You can then share your photos with Park and Rec, and we can showcase the class of two thousand and twenty on the website. Again, info will be posted online. Um, typically this time of year, Park and Rec is almost ready for the hundreds of kids registered for camp that starts when school lets out. This year is extremely di, different. Governor Wolf's announcement last Friday clarified that camps can take place in the yellow days, but with many restrictions. With the news, the Parks and Rec staff is devising a plan to meet all state and CDC guidelines. One of the requirements is limiting groups, including staff, to twenty-five. Those groups cannot share space or cross paths. Many families already pre-registered back in the winter, um, but unfortunately, we will not be able to accommodate everyone. If we were able to offer camp enrollment, we'll be limited based on facilities and camp counselor availability. Staff plans on reaching out again to all who have registered within the week or two with most definite information, but if you've already made a decision not to send your child to camp, regardless of what is planned, please call the Park and Rec office or email Nancy O'Palka at N O P A L K A at N H T W P dot org. Having that information will not only allow time to process refunds, but also gives the staff critical enrollment figures to help in the planning process. Knowing many families use our camps for daycare, we hope to offer some sort of camp, even with all the restrictions. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Kim? Uh, next, Frank?
No report.
No report this evening, thanks, Frank. Barry?
Uh, no report.
Thank you, Barry. Eileen? You're on mute. There you go.
Barry, the new, the, the next two zoning meetings, um, they're Thursday, May twenty-eighth, and it's a Zoom meeting at seven PM. And then the June eighth one is at nine o'clock in the morning, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, and the, uh, May twenty-eighth one, that is when, um, the, uh, property over where, um, Murray's used to be is going to be discussed, is that correct?
I'll have to check, Eileen, to be honest, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I've had some questions. Are you gonna put it up, Bob, on the website, so people know when that's coming up?
That is already up on the website, Eileen, that is correct.
Okay, because I've been getting questions about when that, when the, and the Wawa are coming up, so I said I did for them to check. But someone questioned about nine o'clock in the morning, so that's why I wanted to make sure. Thank you, that's all. I have no report.
Thanks, uh, just, I, I just have one, uh, one quick comment, and that is, um, I, I know all the emergency services have been receiving so many donations of, uh, food and supplies, masks, hand sanitizers, so just on behalf of, of all the groups, just, uh, again, thank you, I thanked everyone last month, and I want to continue to, to do that. We do really appreciate, um, all the extra effort being made for those folks that are kind of managing this thing twenty-four seven, so thank you for that. Uh, next is, uh, manager's report. Bob?
Just, um, I thought everyone would benefit from a.
Just, I thought everyone would benefit from a quick review of where we are financially. And I'll start by saying that when this COVID matter started in March, we started to look at our revenues in particular on a daily basis. And I'm happy to report that as of now, our real estate taxes year over year are the same. In other words, we are not seeing any drop in real estate tax collections. So that's good news there. We are however, seeing a drop in our earned income taxes, which is not unexpected. Right now, as of yesterday, we are about $400,000 short of where we were this time last year. But I'll point out a couple of things. One, those payments come in from Keystone Collections on a weekly basis and we're going to see what kind of payment we get by the end of this week. Last year, at the end of May, we got about $200,000. So if that holds true again, we could cut that number in half. The other thing that's happened is that the tax deadline for self filers was extended to July 15 from April 15. So we do not have the benefit of that revenue. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we catch up to last year at least by the, by the end of July. So everything else, for the most part, has, has been good. We are watching our expenditures on the one side and we've looked at our capital program to see where we can defer projects for a year or two until we, till we have a better, better clearer vision of our, of our financial picture. Our fee based services, of course, are suffering somewhat. Dr. Rose mentioned a few minutes ago that recreation is looking at different ways to do camps. We do expect camps to be done differently this year. I don't know at this point what kind of revenue loss we're going to see, but keep in mind that as we don't collect revenue, we're not hiring people as well to, to run these programs. So there is an offset. But I think all in all, it's, it's, it's not horrible. It is something we're looking at every day. And I mentioned before to you individually, I think we won't really know until later in the summer when we see what the results of the second quarter and earned income tax collections are in the second quarter, which will be around the end of July, beginning of August, we'll have a much better picture than of, of whether we are doing okay or whether we are, we're going to be short in our, in our revenues. So that's a quick snapshot of our budget and where we are today.
Thanks Bob.
Questions, anybody?
Okay. Okay, next solicitor's report. Joe?
Just one item and in light of the technical difficulties, I'll try to distill it as quickly and succinctly as possible. As you'll recall, last month, as part of the land development hearing on McDonald's, there was significant discussion on the issue of the easement toward the rear of the property that the township was looking for from the developer in connection with the, the future development of a connector road. And the direction was for the, for the solicitor to work with the attorney for McDonald's to see, to, to work on suitable and agreeable language. We think we've done that. The, the language is such that McDonald's and the township are acknowledging and agreeing that the, the development of the future connection or a series of interconnection connecting roads behind the property is part of the township's plan. At such time as the location, dimensions and specifications for that, for that road or roads are determined by the township, McDonald's agrees to work in good faith with the township to coordinate and be a part of that process as well as any other property owners that would be involved at that time. Once those easements are identified, McDonald's has agreed to provide us with the, the easements by way of one or more deeds of easement that are acceptable in form to the township and those would be recorded in the Office of the Recorder of Deeds. So all of that, I believe is consistent with the direction we were given. All of that has been worked through with McDonald's. There was one question regarding the intention at this time to provide for or require or set forth the requirements, I should say, of who's going to construct what at this indeterminate period of time in the future. I wanted to make sure, I wanted to clarify, as did McDonald's, that it was not your intention now to set forth who will be required to construct what at whatever point in time we ultimately decide what this road or roads are going to look like. That those decisions will be made at that point in time by the township, McDonald's, and any of the other property owners involved. There was a significant amount of discussion at last month's meeting when we went back and tried to parse everything and put it down in, in writing. And so I just wanted to confirm with all of you publicly and, and as part of this process, to let you know that's what we've, what we've distilled everything down to and to confirm that it was not your intention to, to say who will be required to construct what. We're not making those decisions today. And I just wanted to make sure that, that McDonald's and I are correct in that, in that understanding.
Everybody in agreement that is what the intent was? I believe you articulated it quite well. Everybody else, okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
That intention? Okay. Joe, thank you. I know it was a, it was a tough task when you just sort of said, hey, go, hey, you guys go work this out, but it sounds like you did. So that's great for, that's good for everybody. I think we'll, we'll see some good movements, some nice improvements in, in the center of town and I think we solved it satisfactorily. So thanks for that.
Wonderful. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Amanda, engineer's report?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We are now to public comment and I received one email with a comment which I'm happy to read for the record. This is from Greg Kaplan, 74 Titus Avenue in Richborough. And I'm just going to read it as, as written. "The heating air conditioner fan situated on the police station roof is heard inside our house. The sound is amplified into, into our house on the second floor where our bedrooms are. There is a feel of a motor running inside my bedroom heard even with the windows closed. Sound of machinery fan humming all night long. It is heard in the master bedroom, in the master bathroom, and it is heard even louder. Also, two other bedrooms facing township property suffer from the same noise. We need the township to correct the design flaw in the heating and air conditioning system. Possibly put up a cinder block wall four to five feet tall or something alike to obstruct and muffle the sound. This could be such a simple and cost effective solution." So that is the comment that we received. Thank you, Mr. Kaplan, for that. I'll just give Bob a quick opportunity because I know you've been working this issue with the Kaplans.
That is correct. I've been in communication with Mr. Kaplan for several months, three months, four months. We did remove some of the vegetation that was along the property line when the police station was built. To address the lack of a screen there, we did put up a fence. We put slats in the fence and we planted, I think, 15 evergreen trees, Leyland cypress to be precise, that grow very quickly and will, will eventually fill into a very dense screen. I've also been in contact with Mr. Kaplan, or I should say he's been in contact with me about having plantings put on his property on the other side of the fence. And we are, we are close to resolving that issue as well, assuming that we can come to agreement on the terms of a, for lack of a better word, of, of an agreement. I don't have that yet from Joe, but I know Joe will get it to me and I will get that to Mr. Kaplan and assuming it's satisfactory, we'll see trees planted on his property as well. We're talking there about arborvitae, green giant arborvitae, which are also very dense evergreen that grow very quickly. And that in combination with what is already there should eliminate this problem and it certainly will provide a dense screen where no one will see on either side of the property boundary, the other.
Okay, thanks Bob. So we did have the public comment, Mr. Pellegrino's response. I think it sounds like you're going to continue to work that out. So thank you to both parties for continuing to try to sort this out. I have no other public comment. So hearing none.
Adam, before you call it, one other thing.
I'm sorry.
I neglected during my report to, to, to mention that the board did meet in an executive session between your, your April meeting and this evening. It was a virtual, it was a virtual executive session. All of the members of the Board of Supervisors participated, as did Mr. Pellegrino, Mr. Wirt and me. The topic discussed was a matter of pending litigation involving the township. No official action was taken by the board during that executive session. Direction was given to the township manager largely and a little bit to me in terms of how the matter should be handled going forward in as much as it's being handled by the township's council appointed by the township's insurance carrier. But again, no official action was taken then and no official action is required at this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Joe. I do need to back up a little bit. Mr. Kaplan did actually quickly put his hand up. I didn't see it until a second ago in the public comment. So Mr. Wirt, if you can open up Mr. Kaplan's microphone, please. Mr. Kaplan, I think you're live if you want to make your comment.
Yeah, thank you, Greg Kaplan here. I didn't realize it was going to be just in a four minute of an email. I thought I was going to get a chance to speak. I thank Bob for working with us about the trees. However, it, it does solve, as you recall, a few months back, I was at the board meeting, there are two issues. One with the, with the screening from the police station. The second issue is the sound coming from the roof. So this issue with the sound coming from the roof, if, and that's a hypothetical, if those trees will provide some kind of barrier from the sound, we're talking years. What I'm talking about is we're suffering every day from the sound of that fan and, and really, I walked over there and I took a close look and I stood there for a while. We're talking about one unit on that roof that is making that sound. If, you know, it was just an idea in my mind, it's a simple solution to it, just to put up some cinder block, just to shield that part of that fan from our property. And try that out. I mean, it's, we're talking money investment is almost none. And try that out.
I, I don't know how we would put up, I don't know where you think we should put up cinder block or how we would do it. If you're talking about on the building, on the, on the wall, that's, that's not possible. If you're talking about blocking on the ground, then you're talking about building a foundation and a five foot wall is not going to cut it.
No, just on the roof where that one unit is, it's not.
We can't put cinder block on the roof. It can't be done. It's a rubber roof.
We're talking about a few blocks just to cover that part of it.
It's a rubber roof. We can't do it.
Well, we're looking for some kind of a solution to this. I mean, the trees are, you guys are talking, will provide a barrier to the sound. This is years and years. We hear the sound every day in most of our bedrooms upstairs. I'm not a, you know, in that business, but obviously the design was flawed where when you guys built that building or the designer of the building thought that the neighboring house wouldn't hear anything, but we do. I wouldn't be here talking to you guys second time, asking for some sort of a solution on that. I do appreciate the trees. When that happens, that'd be great. Again, we're talking about years, but the sound, it's there.
I, the only thing I can suggest right now is, and, and we did this once, we can take additional sound readings at the property line to see what the measurements are.
It, I don't think it's an issue with the loudness of the unit. It's an issue of we hear it in our house and constant buzzing sound. And when we open the window, it's as if that air conditioner unit is right under the window. And we have a three quarter acre property, you're building this far away. We hear it in our bedrooms. So, I mean, it's not the loudness of it. It's on a lower frequency. It bothers us. I, I mean, I lose sleep. I have anxiety because of it. It, it's not, it's not supposed to be there. We didn't buy a house next to, you know, supermarket. We were there before this was constructed and now there's this sound that's bothering my family and it's heard in all of the bedrooms upstairs. I mean, the solution is simple in my mind, but I'm not an engineer. Maybe you guys, I know Bob, you looked into this before you came up with some numbers about building something around it, but it maybe is a much simpler solution. I mean, if you could meet me at the property and I'll show you exactly the fan with the unit that's making that noise, maybe you, you guys can rethink this and come up with something. We'd greatly appreciate it.
Well, you know, I, I think we can do is let's isolate which unit it is.
Yeah.
If it's more than one, I mean, there's a dozen units on that roof, maybe more. If it's, if it's just one or two, we'll take a look at it. But that's all I can think of right now.
Amazing. That would be great. I mean, you, you and I are conversating via email and you, you have my phone number. Call me, we can come up there. I could show you exactly the one that's doing the disruption.
Well, I'm going to ask our construction manager to, to try and isolate the units that are making the humming. You're saying it's a loud hum.
It's a hum. It's a constant hum. Yeah, it's.
Okay. Even during the day?
All the time.
All right. Took a look at it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Kaplan. I'm glad we worked out a little bit of a path forward here. So I think that, that was, that was time well spent. Appreciate that. We don't have any other public comments and so we're ready to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your patience with the internet and the, the speed and the choppiness. Hopefully you were able to hear all of the meeting. Have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone.